He shook his hand, but he didn't shake his mind. Alright, go ahead.
Yes, I did.
Mr. Struthers, you just asked for this to be had?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, because I'm gonna speak about it. You guys didn't know.
We're ready to go.
You can have that on.
Yeah, just a moment. Turn it on.
It's on the website.
Okay.
Is that about that? That removal guy up there?
Yep.
Who's chairing the meeting?
Weaver.
Take us on. Or take us on.
Alright.
This meeting is now called to order. Uh, the uh, Public Safety and General Services Administration Joint uh Committee meeting in the City of East Cleveland, and it is now six nineteen. Call the local committees, please.
Councilman Keane.
Present.
Councilman Martin.
Present.
Councilman Baker.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Councilman. Council Wyler.
She's not even one of us. Right, so we're fine. Alright.
So.
Do we have any legislation that we need to discuss? In this committee?
Which committee is it, which president?
This is both.
Both, any legislation we go with, fine.
Alright, can this has the order to start with one of the committees?
Yeah, yeah. Because I don't know what General Services is.
There's legislation.
I have no legislation. Do we have any, any uh, any business within that committee, any, any updates? I know we have a new fire truck, uh, a fire apparatus, the new ambulance that arrived, uh,
What we do?
What's the status on part timers over in the private department? Are we uh, okay with our pool of individuals over there or not?
Oh, well, were we, were we, were we uh, informed by the Department of Safety, are they gonna say represent there?
See, this was initially my agenda, and I got the fire and the police on there.
Right.
And then I put them both on hold. Because although they're under our committees, we didn't necessarily want to discuss those. But we wanted to put them there so that everybody knows. So I didn't ha- have the clerk even contact them. Because I wanted those discussions to be on hold. We're, we're gonna have more meetings.
On hold.
Yeah. We're gonna have more meetings. So we can talk about the new fire trucks in the overtime. We're gonna have one in, in two weeks. First of the year, we could have another meeting. We're gonna be having more meetings because we got a lot of stuff that's coming at us that we've been working on.
Okay. So there's no, there's no legislation or nothing right now?
Well, just I, I believe it to be, you know, maybe I'm farfetched in this, but I believe it to be appropriate to discuss the closeout of the year. We're closing out the year. And what milestones or accomplishments have happened? And then what do we need to look forward to? Or this new council needs to look forward to as it convenes in January? So, you know, as far as things being on hold, I think that to be more of a, you know,
Why?
A sidestep for, for, for the business that needs to be accomplished going forward.
I kind of agree with that, but I think that that'd be the closing for next to the safety or important committees.
Just making a point of reference at this point. So, so now, now you have nothing on health and safety, then?
Then the Director of Law is updating the traffic control and safety.
And it says East Cleveland. City Schools. East Cleveland Schools Joint Beautification Project. New business, if you want to go there.
That's, that, that comes under, you know?
General Services?
Yes.
Well, let me ask you, uh, not to cut off, uh, Constable Baker. What do we have on the health and safety? Anything on that health and safety?
I said nothing.
The Director of Law is gonna talk about the traffic situation.
I, I got a couple of questions, the disease got to do with traffic, just something I need to know. And I need to ask you. Can I answer that now?
If you want to get down to miscellaneous on that.
Okay.
Let's go down to miscellaneous.
It's kind of like we don't enjoy meetings. Really having a hardest time.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's simple. All we do is go through boom, boom, boom. It's, it's not very hard at all.
Okay, when we're, we're on new business.
We're on new business now. New business, right? And
Mister, you gotta follow it as a, as a friend, but.
So that's, so that's where we are, new business.
Mm-huh.
We have been talking about working with or getting partners, forming partnerships with people outside to help us kind of spruce the city up. Bring in services, bring in yada, yada, yada to the city. So, I met with the superintendent. And we talked about
The superintendent of schools?
Superintendent of schools. And, you know, we talked about working together on, uh, various projects. Uh, different things that she could help out. The school could help out with the city, right? And, and I'm glad the Melan Leach is here, Community Development Director. Because one of the things we also talked about was, and I didn't know that the school has a kind of like carpenter class or rehab class where they learn stuff like that. So, yeah, so we want to sit down and kind of hammer out if there's anything or any way we could maybe use them to do some of the, I believe it's home program stuff? So, that's one of the things. But what we have on here is the joint beautification project. Now Weaver and I met with the teacher, Teachers Art at Shaw. And now they're coming up with a mock paintings or mock pictures of what they can do to the hallways in City Hall. As well as framed pictures that they can put up there to sell. And so when they come back with these examples, we'll be able to look at them along with courts and choose one or two or adjustments so that we can, you know, kind of spruce up City Hall a little bit. Did I miss anything on that, Constable?
No, that was, that was fine.
Okay.
Uh.
Just asking the Williams.
Um, Mr. Wheeler. Uh. I got a couple of questions on the health and safety. Uh. I'm encouraged by the, to, to put beautification and put pictures up and all like that. Uh. So far, we've had a mild winter. Okay. Uh, but yet, yesterday, the other day, two days ago, I was up on stairs. And I saw two cars stuck in front of where Huron Hospital used to be. Okay. Now, that's a health and safety issue. Because it's tearing up people's cars. And what I don't understand, not you, just as, as a collective body, why don't we just have that blocked off so people don't go down? That's part one.
I agree.
Okay. And part two, Hillsborough and Bellboard? You know what I'm talking about? Hillsborough and Bellboard.
That little, this big.
That little section there is just as messed up as, uh, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, it is unfair and incomprehensible that we can't even block the street off, put a sign up that's saying, "Do not go past it" because, uh, it's tearing up people. I tried to drive down it and I said, "I'll never drive, try to go through, 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 through this." So from a health and safety issue, as a chairman, what can we do? Since
I think
I mean, we gotta work with the mayor to, to at least put, you know how you ride down a freeway and they have it blocked off? Like you go down seventy, you know? And you got those big, uh, brick things? Why couldn't we just have blocked it off so people can't go down? And they could just go up the, you know, the streets because it's horrible?
When I come in, I agree. When I come down those streets, I'm thinking at night, somebody coming out there at night that don't know the neighborhood.
Right, right!
They, they, they almost kill themselves.
Exactly!
So, I agree.
So what, what do you think we should do as a chairman of health and safety?
I'll talk to the administration, see what, what can make that a priority.
You know, we, it, it's, it's come up. So, I, I'm putting that out there, not to put you on the spot, but it's, 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 when I saw, saw it, and, and then, and I tried to drive through it, I said, "This is crazy." And then Hillsborough and Bellboard, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, let me finish.
Remember Minister Patrick came up here once.
Oh, oh, okay.
He turned on that street and grabbed his windshield on his car.
Right. That is important because people can sue us. We have a responsibility for those streets, don't we? Okay. Alright. So, i- i- if you guys
They'll be dressed.
To, to have access to the mayor, we, we need to do something about that, especially them two, that's, those two stand out, there could be more. I'm talking about, uh, Huron Hospital, that, right in front of, well, Huron Hospital, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I was up there the other day and, and it was cars beating and all like that. Just, just tearing up cars going through there. And, and I was just saying to Brother Wheeler and, and, and King and him, that if we can at least block off the street with, with brick things so the people can't go down the street.
They did.
But not, not here? No, you're here for a while.
Right there.
You're not there no more?
No, there ain't, there ain't nothing there right now.
They moved them. As a matter of fact.
He couldn't give you a chance.
They had blocked up and then, well, they had blocked them off. First with barrels, then with something else. And the people were moving the barrels.
Speaking of the concrete slabs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about big concrete slabs that people cannot pick up.
Last ones we used were down there on Lakefront, right?
Right, that's what we need.
Slabs there.
Yeah.
House was getting
That's what I'm talking about.
Something like that.
Okay, so, what happened was
Okay, hold on a second. Let me, let me, let me
Okay, so what's the rest?
My, my suggestion is, Brother Wheeler, you chairing this, you know what I'm talking about, the brick concrete things that they have on the freeway?
Yeah.
The, okay. If we can get those across that street going, uh, north and south and put a sign up there, we wouldn't end it.
I, I, I mean, that's my, my opinion.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright. I'll be honest with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're still on new business, and you brought up a few points.
Okay.
But that point is actually on the agenda that we talked about it at the last joint meeting. We talked about it in regards to the Page Wymore area, the area in front of Huron Road, in which we specifically asked, and I'm glad the law directors here
Mm-hmm.
For those barricades, for pricing on those barricades as well as signs and then any necessary legislations to create, not through traffic, no through traffic. So if it's on our radar, we've been talking about it. Right?
Okay.
Okay, so.
Did you say pricing?
Well, we need, we need to get the pricing for the barricades. We need to get the pricing for the, uh, signs. And then we want, not just those signs, but the no left turn signs. We wanted to kind of get a feel on what it's gonna cost us, the city, to put that in it. In case you missed the memo, we are financially strapped right now. So we've got to kind of watch
That's why.
Every dime that we're spending.
Alright.
Okay, let, let me say this. Because I brought up, I did, I need, I need to put this in terms of pricing.
Mark, oh, Mark, Mark.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, I just, I gotta say.
Is he finished before you interject your comments? How are you finishing?
So, I'm, I'm actually done with that. We're, we're gonna move on and get to
Okay, but I, I want to finish my point.
Mark, you got the floor.
Okay. Pricing. If we reach out, the administration reach out to s- to some of these other cities, even to the state, they probably would give those to us. We don't have to pay a dime. What I'm saying is, the administration has a responsibility to do something. But to just let that sit up there and let people drive down there and tear their cars up is totally unacceptable. It's totally un- we reach out, the fire people has helped, we, we didn't even reach out, they came to us. If we reach out to the state, they always putting them things all over the highway, ninety-one, seventy-one, and said, I'm asking with love in my heart, that they reach out and say, "Help us!" Because we ain't got no money. That's on the record. Thank you!
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see, you got some, some information back by through this.
Thank you!
Alright. Director of Law?
With reference to the sign that didn't approach the, uh, Police Chief and
Now, hold on a second. Do you all know what we're talking about, or you wanna hurry?
No.
The Director of Law update traffic control and safety.
Right, right, but they all know what the section, the street intersections, of what you're talking about?
Oh, um.
I don't know, my, and
The one?
By Nemo? No left turn? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah, they, they, one last time.
Euclid Superior, Euclid, Eddie Road.
No, no left turn coming out of Nemo's?
Any other places.
Any of those places on, on, on that strip.
Yeah, no, the, uh, Police Chief said that he had looked into pricing and talked to the Finance Director. And at this point, it was, uh, prohibitive, but perhaps, uh, in the next uh appropriation here in two thousand sixteen, there could be some special efforts made in order to cover that cost. Also, before you just put up, um, the signs, there needs to be some kind of, uh, traffic study. That scientific, um, assessment of how many cars go in, when they go in, and, uh, what kind of, uh, jam, traffic jams, or what kind of, uh, obstacles they create. So, that might take a, an engineer or an appropriately, uh, credentialed person in order to give a report back to council. So, I would suggest that council try to contract, uh, traffic study. I know that you have, in an ad hoc fashion, several of you have conducted your own. And no disregard to your expertise, but, uh, you know, and from a layperson's point of view. But I think before you institute any such traffic directional, uh, changes, that that should be done to justify and legitimize the, the changes. And that will give great support when the fiscal commission is requested to, uh, put up barriers, pay for barriers, barriers, or to, uh, purchase signs.
Before we move on, if you got any questions?
I, I just have a question, a strategic question. Uh, maybe you can answer. Euclid is Route twenty.
Right.
And it takes you all the way to New York.
County road.
It's a county road. Can we, as, as a municipality, put those up without going through the county, through, through the county bureaucracy? That's my question to you, Law Director. Because Euclid, uh, when we got it paved about, oh, maybe less than ten years ago, through the state paved all Route twenty in East Cleveland. Yeah, we, we got about eight, nine million to get it done. This is, we're just going back to Ottawa. Okay, alright.
We would certainly consult with county.
Right, because it's, it's a, it's a county road.
Before
Right.
Before any, uh, changes.
Thank you, alright.
That is my
Did, did you understand my question, Brother Wheeler?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you. Look into, look into it, okay? Because if we're talking about no left turn and all like that, it's a county road. Okay.
With the help of the Community Development Director, who has access to most council, uh, uh, resources that the county works with as well as the Finance Director.
Thank you.
But because of the, because of the powers and suggestions of the inmates night, for the record, we can get a type, type copy of the nice minutes, the nice time to have from your memory and so forth.
That would be good, that would be real good.
But we, you know, sorry, well, we will from now on have, you know, what's starting to happen. But we are supposed to have minutes for every committee in, we make up. So, we don't have to answer that, because it's only, uh, we got, we have, uh, that will do. Make sure that the members to be able, uh, at the main, uh, to, 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 to. But I would, uh, suggest that, um, we have the, um, the small, um, inform, uh, informal meeting with, uh, the Community Development, uh, Mr. Leach. Mr. Leach, we have a informal meeting with Mr. Leach on how, what is, and what is not, uh, is viable, um, area for a life and does that, how to get it done, maybe from the county.
Okay, and then, and then last brief comment, the Law Director talked about the traffic study. That's a cost.
Well, now if you go through your community development.
Is it, is it right in, in, in the Community Development's budget?
When I talk to him about that, he's making suggestions, and there might be some that he can get out there that might be, um, uh, a pro bono, or might be something that's viable to a, uh, community like ours.
Uh, and, and I think that us as council being watched, I'll make sure that we don't just have really nearly a thomani added.
Yeah.
Alright, go on.
Alright. Let's move on to the, uh, presentation for Legacy Communications.
Uh, you got, you got a pass?
Yes, please stand yourself. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Liam Pham, Bro, Legacy Communications. I, uh, I'm here tonight to talk to you about getting, uh, our channel back up and running. For those of you who may know, East Cleveland Channel Nine is off the air. Been off the air for forty-four hours. Uh, on yesterday, I received a call from our mayor. He demanded that, um, either it's material play or nothing play. And I told him, "Look, I haven't been paid." I mean, you have no right to make demands like that to me. Why don't you pay me? And then we go from there. He was, he was adamant and not, not hearing me, so, uh, I shut the channel down. And so it's off. Now, for, uh, a good period of time now, at least two years, the City Council has been off the air. And, um, that was due to, uh, the council choosing not to, um, renew Legacy Contract, uh, back about a couple of years ago. And, uh, what that has led to is, uh, you know, now a dark, a dark channel. All of you should have this proposal before you. I, uh, wanted to start out and say that Legacy Communications LLC proposes to provide professional television services to the benefit of the residents of the City of East Cleveland. The following is our proposal, services. Gentlemen, produce East Cleveland City Council. We'll bring you back to the air, here, the community with East Cleveland cable, and understand what the issues are before the city and, and, uh, being handled by the, the City Council. Uh, also, under, that was A, so under B, PEG channel regulation and maintenance. A PEG channel is what Channel Nine is. The P in PEG stands for public access. The E in PEG stands for educational. The G in PEG stands for governmental. Uh, our channel is a PEG channel that has those three components combined. Open, uh, let's see. We will schedule and hear video material on Channel Nine consistent with time slot allocations listed below. So just below that section is some times that, that I'm proposing that, um, the mayor's material plays in certain days, and certain times. The council's material plays certain days, certain times. The open source, uh, uh, programming plays certain days and certain times. And the public access plays certain days and certain times. So there are four categories. Uh, open source fair use program. This is a definition. It's non-commercial television programs, internet programs, and independent, independent film projects that can be acquired in air without incurring any costs or royalties fees. So, I'm proposing that numbers one through seven on page one, in the middle of the page, numbers one through seven, Monday, nine AM to six PM is the mayor. Monday, six PM to midnight is the public, public access. Tuesday, nine AM to sixteen PM is public access. Six PM to midnight is City Council. Wednesday, nine AM to six PM is the public access. Six PM to midnight is the mayor. Thursday, nine AM to six PM is City Council. Six PM to midnight is the East Cleveland public. Friday, nine AM to six PM is open source. Open source I just defined for you. Book, uh, Friday and Saturday is open source days. Sunday, nine AM to six PM is the mayor. Six PM to, uh, midnight is the council. This schedule is not written in stone, but it gives us something to follow in terms of putting fairness on our air. Our people are paying franchise fees for the right to, it's, it's the people's air. It's not the mayor's air, or my air, or any other individual or grouping in the city. It belongs to the people. And they pay a franchise fee for that air to be there for them. And they've not had it in many, many, many years in, in the City of East Cleveland. So they're paying, but not receiving what they're paying for. Uh, there is a graphic diagram of this time slot breakdown on the last two pages when you're faculty. We will regulate and schedule all PEG channel access program utilizing automatic program playback equipment. Video, uh, material will be scheduled and aired under each of the four categories listed below. Those categories again are East Cleveland Public, East Cleveland City Council, East Cleveland Mayor's Office, and open source fair use program. So those are the four categories. On page two, the East Cleveland Public. Video content, uh, played during time slots allocated to East Cleveland Public will be filled by content produced and submitted by the East Cleveland Public. The East Cleveland Public will drop off and receive their television submissions on digital video discs, that's DVDs, or on junk drives at City Council's Business Office inside City Hall. The DVDs or junk drives will then be forwarded to Legacy Communications LLC, where the material will be transcoded and then uploaded on an automatic playback system scheduled in air during the time slots allocated for public access. Uh, to prevent dead air or excessive content repetition, the service provider may select and play open source content if there is insufficient public access content from the public to fill the time slots allocated. And what that means is that in, in the course of a week, there would be several hours of public access time slotted in the system. But when you only have one or two submissions from the public, then that's, that material, if you have two hours out of eighteen, this, this material is just gonna become repetitive. And the time slot for public access, it would just be repeating way too much. So what we're saying is that in those instances, then, uh, the open source programming could also play. Uh, going further, the City Council. Video content played during the time slots allocated to City Council will be determined by City Council. In other words, what that means, could, could you let me get through it? And then, uh,
Yeah.
Okay. What that means is that, let's say, for example, the City Council is supposed to play nine AM to six PM. Well, in that slot, the mayor's material may not play. Because that, that would be not in, in the rules that, that were established. So only City Council, or what City Council designates, will play in that slot. Now, if City Council says that there's some material that City Council got, produced, and wants played, then that plays. Period. And the mayor has no control over that. Once you pass this, the piece locks it down. The, the fighting stops. All of the he said, she said, finger pointing and upset stops. The rules become, public access plays between these hours. The mayor's plays, the mayor plays between these hours. City Council plays between these hours. That does the thing. And that's what we've been, I've been trying to say that really for years. We're finally getting there because that would stop the madness. It would just stop it. And, and further, I would say, any hassles that come, I would say that the council and the mayor then hash that stuff out. Because why should any vendor be in the middle? That's not one's role. Some people here, around here, expected me to just clash with the mayor and fight and wrestle on the floor. I'm not gonna do that. I'm a gentleman. It's not me. So, this settles it. And that's why I'm presenting this to you at this time. I think this is a very critical time. So we stop the madness. Uh, the mayor's office. Video content playing, played during time slots allocated to the mayor will be determined by the mayor's office. So the mayor's office wants whatever to play between his hours, then that, that's, that's the stuff that's what. Uh, cost. In thoughtful consideration In thoughtful consideration of the city's financial reality, balanced against the public's communication needs, outlined in this proposal, we will provide the services described here in exchange for the amount, twenty thousand dollars. Now, the amount is, uh, the amount coincides with the amount that is collected here in this city as franchise fees by the cable company. East Cleveland has been co-mingling these fees. In other words, the residents of East Cleveland have been paying for access to their channel, and they've not received. The money's shuffled into, uh, general fund. That, that should not be. You are the council, you set the budget. The council can allocate this amount of money to serve the people. They pay franchise fees, and that's the purpose of franchise fees. So we can stop that by you guys taking appropriate action as the council. And we get this thing settled, you know, once and for all. To ensure fairness and equality in serving the city's peg channel needs, all program, programming will be scheduled and aired according to the specific time slot allocations listed on page one, unless it's changed by official action of the council. Those would be, as a vendor, that's locked in stone to me as a vendor. You know, that's it. I don't care how many times my phone rings, or how mad somebody get. Council said, "Your stuff plays between this time and this time," and that's it. If you, you wanna appeal that, appeal to the council. The other thing is, uh, adopting this proposal for peg channel access television will provide opportunities for East Cleveland's children. You guys ever watched Johnny Carson? I'm a little older than some of you guys. You know, where you had a nine-year-old kid come on the Johnny Carson show, talk about his public access program? And he would have had the governor in his house or filmed the governor at some place, 'cause his father's a big wig too. But he comes on very proudly talking about, "I'm nine years old and I got my own show and it's public access." And this is what our children need to experience. As well, and they're paying for it. Youth and adults are also included. It will bring freedom of speech to the voiceless East Cleveland residents who pay cable franchise fees and city taxes but could never participate because there has never been any opportunities for public, uh, public access participation until now. If you have any questions or wish to discuss any of the provisions in this proposal, please feel free to contact me. And my phone number and information is on the packet, and I have cards. And I'll tell you that after. So, ladies and gentlemen, that is the proposal. I further want to say that the Communications Act of nineteen thirty-four combined and organized federal regulations for telephone, telegraph, and radio communications. The act created by the Federal Communications Commission to oversee and regulate these industries. Uh, the act is updated periodically to add provisions governing new communications technologies such as cell phones, and computers, tablets, and things, such as broadcast and cable satellite television. It is generally understood that the FCC delivered freedom of speech to the population of the United States through public access television. Uh, public access channel content represents that freedom of speech and is protected under the US, uh, Constitution as well as the federal government and the FCC. What we're talking about here is content that is freedom of speech and that's not recognized by the city, or the county, or the state. It's federal, ladies and gentlemen, this is federal. You say something under public access, nobody can say, "You can't say that." That is your freedom of speech. Further, uh, when you tamper with it, you can be sued. There've been many lawsuits over this across the United States over the years. Uh, there was the Communications Act of nineteen thirty-four. There was the Cable Communications Act of nineteen eighty-four. There was the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. I mean, there's been a lot of litigation on this stuff.
Mr. Pham Bro, I mean, you cut your time, you're going to break short. And I think what you're saying, everybody understands or should understand about the access and how about not, when they had access to the channel over the last few years. So, I can't speak for all of us, but I'm sure some of us and not most of us would like to have more access to that channel for other information to be disseminated through. And you agree?
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, let's see if any of you has any questions.
I just have two brief questions for you.
Oh, that's it with that, one.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, April of twenty fifteen, I asked about the franchise fee that you mentioned. Uh, it said we have received, as of April twenty-second, you know, mind you that that's not the first of the year. It said that we received one payment this year for sixteen hundred dollars. One thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. That seems to not be a significant amount of money coming in, and then there was some type of ledger connected to it, um, of some franchise deposits after that. While I do support, I do support what you're trying to do. And we've had our conversations privately about, uh, the cable access channel and how it came to form. There is no secret that you and I both supported Gary Norton. And, you know, by all means, that channel was pretty much ran by Gary Norton, um, with the exception of some council meetings that were filmed. And you're correct, when the contract was, uh, not renewed or not approved by the council, and the council chose to go in a different direction, I noticed that the, uh, Channel Nine and what's, it's actually two channels. It's Channel Nine.
Only Channel Nine.
It was nine, and what else do we have?
Well, in the past, some years ago, I argued with the cable company and arranged a second channel, but there were two. That channel was Channel Seven.
Seven, okay, thank you.
Because other cities have them, those channels are all broken out. They have channel for public access, channel for the mayor's administration.
I just wanna know, could it be two? Yeah, potentially it could be two. But, uh, the reality of my question is that through what I would say is, is regis politics, that is the summation of why we have the relationship we have with cable company, you, uh, the mayor's office, because of, of communication. We have not locked down on the fact that that channel is to just inform the community and its stakeholders, not to be a political driver or political, you know, agenda. And I'm, you know, I'm not saying, not saying that this is directed towards you, but it gets on there somehow. But I'm glad, I'm glad that this proposal, this proposal says something different from what I have experienced. And, 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 you know, it's not pretty much a rebuttal, but saying, saying to you, I'm glad that, I think you and, and I think Mr. Branch had something to do, 'cause he showed me this before. Uh, I'm glad that it's come to this moment to be able to restore, restore, uh, the cable, uh, access channel. I am also sad, Mr. Pham Bro, that you were not compensated for the services that you rendered to this city and some forty thousand dollars in total. I am sad about that. When a person enters into a contract with the city, no matter how one feels about him, if you, if you gave the services, you're due the payment. Um, and...